Good evening and welcome to the Red Hook Town Board meeting of June 8th, 2021. Would you be kind enough to join me in the Pledge of Allegiance? I pledge allegiance.
To the flag.
Of the United States of America. And to the Republic. For which it stands.
One nation.
Under God. Indivisible.
Liberty.
And justice for all.
For all. Thank you very much for the folks at home. Hope you are doing well. This very sticky June day. Matt, would you be kind enough to put the agenda up for the folks at home? So we have a public hearing tonight on a farm land protection application approval. And that's the Moser Farm. If you've been following along in previous meetings, you know where it's located. The southern entrance gateway to our community on the western side of Route 9. And tonight we have final approval for the funding there, which we're leveraging with other entities. So we'll have the resolution after the public hearing. We're going to, for the second item, set a public hearing to amend our parking regulations to establish no parking zones on portions of Metzger and Old Farm Road, where they intersect with Route 9 near the movie theater. If you're familiar with Old Farm Road and Metzger between the bank and the vet office there. We're going to just acknowledge and okay a Bridge New York application for full replacement of the Aspen Wall Bridge. And then we'll get a very brief LWRP program update from councilperson Christine Kane. And then we have a little bit of correspondence. So that's tonight. We will begin as we do every first meeting of the month with the supervisor's report. And this is for the period ending May 31st, 2021. There we go. We started the month with an opening balance of 8,263,222. We had receipts of 129,500, dispersments of a little over 270,000 for remaining balance of $8,122,331. We have a few budget adjustments, some adjustments made due to classifications that the OSC wanted our bookkeeper to make. We have increased mortgage tax revenues coming in, which is very good. And there's an adjustment reflected for that. Chips, we have some increased chips money coming from New York State. And we have both a memo and a letter from Department of Transportation on that as well. You have your monthly variance reports. Are there any questions about the supervisor's report? If not, I would entertain a motion to accept.
So moved.
Thank you, Bill Hamel. Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, and that's inclusive of the budget adjustments? All in favor? Jacob Testa?
Aye.
Bill, I'll move to Bill O'Neill.
Aye.
Thank you very much. We also have the clerk's report tonight. Deanna?
Okay, the town clerk's report for the period of May 1st, 2021 to May 31st, 2021. Total local shares remitted to the supervisor, $4,956.50. $4,193 was money collected for garbage at the recycling center. The amount paid to New York State Ag and Markets for the spay neuter program was $36. And the amount paid to New York State Department of Health for marriage licenses was $67.50. The total state, county, and local revenues, $5,060.
Very, very good. Thank you very much, Deanna. Is there a motion to accept the clerk's report?
So moved.
Thank you, Bill O'Neill. Second?
Second.
And Christine Kane, all in favor? Jacob Testa?
Aye.
Bill Hamel?
Aye.
And myself. Thank you. A few quick announcements. The Community Action Partnership of Dutchess County, with an office here on East Market Street in Red Hook, would like our assistance in spreading the word that New York State has an emergency rental assistance program, the information of which we'll have on our website. But applications are now being accepted and they can give you the guidelines of who's eligible for those programs. There's an 800 number for folks who need additional assistance. Or you can contact Community Action directly at 452-5104 or email them at info@dutchesscap.org. Next up, we want to give you just a quick COVID update. The number of active cases currently 120 in the county. The positivity rate has finally fallen below 1%. And the number of cases within our municipality is, new cases, is below five. We want to update you as to the plans for opening. We have been targeting to open town hall on July 1st. And we are going to start on July 1st appointment only so that we can maintain social distancing. And probably if all, all things go well, within a couple of weeks, we can then, you know, have the, the doors open to the public without appointments. We are going to ask everyone coming in to, to please wear a mask. It's, it's just easier and simpler and we can service you better. And then we don't have to inquire as to who is or isn't vaccinated. So we'll just ask you, if you don't mind, for a little while longer to please wear a mask while you're here in town hall. So that's July 1st. More information about pop-up vaccines. We have one coming this Sunday, as a matter of fact, here in Tivoli. And we'll have all that information on the website later tonight or in the morning. Saturday, June 19th, at the Rec Park Pavilion is another signup for our summer rec program. And the good news there is that New York State has indicated that kids will not be required to wear masks during any portion of the summer rec program. The deadline for the signups is June 25th because there's additional paperwork. We do need to have everyone signed up in advance. We also need to figure out staffing levels. So we ask that you make sure that your vaccination records are due no later than June 25th. And there is a requirement that your children be vaccinated for the same things that they were vaccinated for in the past, but obviously not for COVID-19 vaccine. And more information on our website as well. And I think those are all the announcements that we have. And Deanna, I think we're ready to do the notice for our 7:35 public hearing. It's a public hearing to receive comments on the Moser farmland protection application.
Notice of public hearing regarding purchase of development rights project at Brittany Hollow Farm in the town of Red Hook. Please take notice that a public hearing will be held by the town board of the town of Red Hook on June 8th, 2021 at 7:35 o'clock PM local time for the Brittany Hollow Farm project described below pursuant to Town's Community Preservation Fund Program, CPF Program, to hear all interested persons regarding the acquisition of an interest or right in the, in real property to preserve open space pursuant to Section 247 of the General Municipal Law, including the purchase of a contractual right necessary to achieve the purposes of such provisions for each such project. Brittany Hollow Farm amended application submitted by Daryl J. and Deborah J. Moser for acquisition of a conservation easement or a third-party enforcement right in a conservation easement proposed to be held by Duchess Land Conservancy with respect to approximately 60 total acres consisting of approximately 37.39 acre parcel of property. Tax map ID number 134889-6271-00-073869 in the town of Red Hook, New York, and approximately 10.01 acre parcel of property. Tax map ID number 134889-6271-00-180845 in the town of Red Hook, New York, and an approximately 12.6 acre parcel of property. Tax map ID number 135089-6271-00-060795 in the town of Rhinebeck, New York, all located on Albany Post Road in Dutchess County, New York. With respect to the project described above, Duchess Land Conservancy has applied for funding for a portion of the acquisition and project costs from the Dutchess County Partnership for Manageable Growth and the Sina Hudson Land Trust Incorporated. It is proposed that the town of Red Hook would participate in the portion of the project located within the town of Red Hook. The total increased project cost, including proposed program partner funding, is estimated not to exceed $395,000, with the town's increased share, increased share estimated not to exceed $122,000. The town's share is proposed to be financed from the CPF program. Due to the ongoing COVID pandemic, the town hall is closed to the general public until further notice. Pursuant to Executive Order Number 202.1 as extended, issued by Governor Cuomo and advisories issued by federal, state, and local officials related to the COVID-19 virus, the public will not be permitted to attend in person. Board members are expected to participate in the public hearing via teleconference or video conference. Please refer to the meeting agenda to be posted on the town's website at www redhook.org, listing the specific link, which will allow the public to view and listen to the proceedings live, which is expected to be available at www.pandaTV23.org. Click on watch live. Project documents will be posted with the meeting agenda on the town's website. All interested persons will be given an opportunity to be heard as follows. One, the public is encouraged to submit written comments by email or telephone in advance of the hearing to supervisor@redhook.org and 845-758-4622 by 4 o'clock PM the day of the hearing. Please note CPF hearing in the subject. Two, written comments may be dropped in the town's Dropbox in advance of the hearing at the Town Hall, 7340 South Broadway, Red Hook, New York, 12571 by 4 o'clock PM the day of the hearing. Please observe the recommendations of the CDC regarding distancing and use of masks. All comments, three, all comments so received in advance of the hearing will be noted in the hearing record. Interested persons may also comment by email or telephone to supervisor@redhook.org. And 845-758-4622 on the date of the hearing from the time of opening the hearing until the close of the hearing. All reasonable accommodations will be made for persons with disabilities. In such case, please notify the town clerk in advance at the above address or by phone, 845-758-4606, so that arrangements can be made. Please take further notice that a copy of said application is available for review on the town's website. By order of the Town Board of the town of Red Hook dated May 11th, 2021, Deanna Cochran, Town Clerk, Town of Red Hook.
Very good. Thank you very much, Deanna. That was a lengthy notice. Appreciate you reading all of it. Matt, if you'd be kind enough to scroll to the math page, just for the folks at home, we can show them. It's in black and white, but just if anybody's watching for the first time, there we go. If you could blow that up a little bit. I think that would, that would work well. Okay, very good. At this time, I'd like to open the public hearing. And to note for the record that we received a memo from Marian Johnson, the Chair of the Community Preservation Fund Committee. And their board reviewed the revised application figures and they continued their recommendation to approve the funding. And we'd like to note that Dutchess County and Sina Hudson are participating to a large degree in this preservation project. We're leveraging the funding more than three to one on this particular effort. So the funds go towards the Red Hook portion of the farm. If you're familiar with the farm, as you're driving up Route 9 on the left-hand side, it crosses over the border from Red Hook to Rhinebeck. We don't have any public comments on this project. Is there anything that the board would like to add before we go ahead and close the public hearing? Okay, hearing nothing. I just want to acknowledge the Mosers for taking this very important step that benefits all of us and future farmers on that property and all the farmers that came before them. Because it wouldn't be possible if it weren't for the hard work of farmers to keep these lands open and available and viable. So I want to thank them, Dutchess County, certainly Duchess Land Conservancy, for all of the work related to the various applications for our funding partners.
Yeah, Robert, I wasn't quite quick enough with the mute button there, but I just did want to say that, in addition to what you just said, that this is a very important area of the town. There's multiple parcels, but you know, it is a gateway to the town. And so, and it provides or it includes a lot of important environmental issues, items. You know, of course, there is prime and statewide important soils on the property. But there's also, because it is a gateway, there's the, the views as you're coming north on Route 9 into the village, provides a, that definition that we're looking for. So that we don't, you can tell when you're entering and leaving the town. You know, it's a way to prevent sprawl just all along Route 9. So there are a lot of additional benefits to a project like this beyond straight farmland protection for, from the, for the town. So I just wanted to make sure that we are all noting that for the record, too.
Thank you. Yep. This is significant. Thank you. Anyone else? Okay, very good. At this time, I'd like to entertain a motion to close the public hearing.
So moved.
Thank you, Christine. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Jacob. All in favor? Bill Hamel? Bill O'Neill?
Aye.
Myself. Okay, we don't have any public comments this evening so far. So, excuse me, why don't we go right into the first item, which is the Resolution Number 36, which is granting approval for the use of these monies for this protection project. And it's Resolution Number 36. It's available on the town website to read in full. I would just make a minor edit on paragraph three. It references tonight's public hearing. It incorrectly has a typo. It indicates a public hearing at 7:45 and it was called for 7:35. So if we could make that manual change to Resolution Number 36. And I'm very happy to move this resolution. So.
Second.
Thank you, Christine. And is there any further discussion? If not, all in favor? Bill O'Neill?
Aye.
Jacob Testa?
Aye.
Bill Hamel?
Aye.
Aye, very good. Thank you very much. And Mosers, thank you very much for, for this very important act on, on your behalf. Okay, second item on the agenda is a resolution to set public hearing on amendments to our parking regulations. It's code, it's chapter 131-03. And if you've been following along on previous meetings, we had a request from our highway superintendent, the messages from a business on the corner of Metzger Road at Route 9, that there was potentially a, a safety issue with folks frequently stopping and taking out their animals right there on Metzger and creating a very tight place with turn around nine. And so we are in, to take a look and come up with recommendations for where we might institute a no standing, not just no parking. Or no, on Metzger. We asked them to take a look at other opportunities that we may want to be proactive and prevent a situation like this. Old Farm Road, they took a, a look at that as well. And so they have a drawing for that and a recommendation for that, which is incorporated into what we are calling Local Law Number B, proposed of 2021. And essentially it defines the areas to be unavailable for parking. And that's Metzger Road on either side from its intersection on Route 9 to a point 230 feet east of the intersection at all times of every day of the week. And on Old Farm Road, which is the road where both the movie theater and the new tradition development is, no parking from the intersection to a point 330 feet to the west of such intersection. And in addition, we're making just a corrective change to that chapter to have the current hours for our recreation parks. We have no parking in there. When the park is closed, the park is closed at 10 PM. And so that is now reflected in bullet, uh, letter A. 10 PM to 6 PM, there's no parking in the rec park. And so we would need to set a public hearing, which we're thinking it would be good to set for the first meeting in July. That would be July 13th at 7:35 PM. Are there any questions about any of the information that you've received over the last several weeks with regard to this topic?
No, I don't have a question, but I just want to clarify that we're talking about creating no stopping zones in the two areas that you were just discussing. So it's not just a question of no standing or no parking. It's, you know, no stopping is pretty much nothing. So it's not, you know, no, delivery vehicles cannot idle on the side of the road while they deliver packages. You know, that would be standing. Obviously, we all know what parking is, you know, so there's no opportunity for, you know, like leave the car and do a quick run-in of some kind or standing where you leave someone in the car and you run and do something. So it's just to keep those areas clear because those roads are narrow. And once you have standing or stopping, particularly if it is larger vehicles, it obstructs traffic, but also view on Route 9 and in Metzger Road particularly, people are having to drive around stopped vehicles to approach the stop sign. And that often puts them either in the opposite lane or at least partly in the opposite lane, which is, you know, a traffic hazard. And we certainly don't want any accidents to be happening. So it's, just want to make it clear that it's no stopping. So that covers everything that could possibly happen within these zones as marked or as will be marked if it passes.
That's correct, Christine. And that's the recommendation of the engineer. And that's what the code provision will provide. No parking, standing, or stopping.
Right. Thank you.
Okay, very good. And I'll be sure to mail to the one, two, three, I believe there's four commercial owners with frontage on these roads, maybe five. We'll make sure that we mail a copy of this. July 13th, we'll give them plenty of time to be aware of this. Okay, so this would be Resolution Number 37, calling for the public hearing on the 13th at 7:35 to consider Local Law Number B proposed. And I assume, is there a second?
Second.
Okay. Uh, we'll do Bill Hamel on the second. And all in favor? Christine Kane?
Aye.
Jacob Testa?
Aye.
Bill O'Neill?
Aye.
Thank you so much. Okay, and just a brief review. As we discussed previously, the Bridge New York Program, a funding program from New York State, which provides the overwhelming majority of funds necessary to do some of our replacement of infrastructure. And our highway superintendent has worked with our engineers to submit the Bridge New York 2021 application for the Aspen Wall Bridge. And the application is in front of you. And are there any questions about it? It provides 95% of the funding. And we certainly could use state dollars for, for these efforts. Any questions? No? Okay, we don't need a resolution, but I assume we're all in favor of submitting this application, which is due tomorrow, as a matter of fact. That's correct? Yes, all in favor? Christine Kane? O'Neill?
Yes.
Okay, Jacob Testa? Bill Hamel?
Aye.
Good, good. Thank you very much. And thanks to our engineers, Creighton Manning, and to our highway superintendent, Doris Burke, for their work on those efforts. Fingers crossed. So the last item on our agenda, as we wanted to get just a little bit of an update, we received a grant, gosh, how long ago, Christine? Maybe three, four years ago, to update our local waterfront revitalization program, LWRP.
Right.
And your subcommittee has done a lot of work towards that. You, Bill O'Neill, Emily Major, Amy Houston, and Brent.
Brett Kowalczak and the Chair, Paula Schoonmaker.
Paula Schoonmaker, especially.
Yes, especially Paula.
Especially Paula. And so we have submitted two sections for discussion proposals to the Department of State. And Christine, could you take it from there?
Okay, um, I don't want, I don't want to make it too lengthy because they're too lengthy a report because we're very at the beginning of this process. But as you said, we are updating our current local waterfront revitalization plan. And there are multiple sections. And we have completed an update of Sections 1 and 2. And as you can see here, Section 1 is the waterfront revitalization area boundary. And then Section 2 is resources within the waterfront revitalization area, right? Inventory and analysis. Thank you, Matt. And so we have completed the updates to that section, those sections, and submitted them to the Department of State for their review and comments. We have received their comments on those two sections and we have met to review them. And so we will be working to address those. Some of them are, you know, some we can deal with quite, quite quickly and others will take a little more research. So we can respond to those comments and then submit again for them to see them. Also, as part of the project, we have created nine new maps that will be included with the next draft or the, the final draft of the organization. I mean, the organization, the program. And yeah, so for instance, we have, you know, this shows. And yeah, so for instance, we have, you know, this shows the boundary and. Resource, there's another one that's resources, then there's soils, so there's nine different ones and. This is, I think, a major upgrade. To the the program itself or the report itself, because, you know, we just didn't have these. Types of abilities to produce these kind of maps when we did it the first time around, so this will be, I think, a major improvement in and of itself. For the maps that will be included. Let's see what else did I want to mention? So the next steps. Is to get public comment and public input on the two sections that we have completed. So now it will be up on the town's website. For people to read and review and we are developing and he's going to use an online survey tool. And have that available for folks to respond and. You know, we're trying to keep it with clear questions, but covering. You know, topics such as what types of uses. People would like to see within our ability to use the river and the waterfront. Obviously, if we've missed anything within the inventory analysis, for instance. But you'd probably be somewhere between eight and ten questions so that it won't be particularly onerous for people or take a lot of time for them to participate and send in the comments. We, of course, do want to hear those comments and incorporate them where, you know, where we can or as much as we can, but that is definitely a requirement of the process also. Before we can move on any further in. With the in finalizing this, these two sections. And we also will be talking about in the survey, our next area we'll be working on, one of the next areas we'll be working on. Is potential projects with what is labeled as projects. Within the L W R P and that would be, you know, all sorts of things from access to, you know, docks or. Other types of, you know, kayak launches or things like that. Parking, you know, issues like that that would be required to go along with. Access to the river itself and and areas within the waterfront district. So we want to do, you know, we'll have some questions about that in the survey also, so that can help us as we move forward. But it's a, you know. I don't want to say it's a bit of a moving target, but there have been a couple of recent. Items that have come out, so now we kind of have to go back and look at what the definitions have changed and and you know what exactly. Falls within the purview and if there's anything we need to add to our. Local waterfront revitalization plan because of the changes and definitions that have come out. And so, you know, there's always these kinds of things that crop up while you're working on a multi-year process like this, so we're. Going to be making sure that we incorporate or review those and incorporate any changes that are needed as we go along also. So that's, that's a fairly quick synopsis, I really want to thank. All of the people on the committee, a lot of work has gone into this already. And it's a great group of people who are very much looking forward to moving this forward and completing the project, so we're all appreciate that and again, all volunteers for the town, so we could not do. A lot of the things that we do if we didn't have such great volunteers. And people who are, you know, residents of our town that really want to. Contribute to, you know, the community and our quality of life. As participating in projects like this and all the other committees and groups that we have here working in the town. Bill O'Neil is also on the committee, so feel free to jump in, Bill, if I have.
Christine, thank you.
You're welcome. Anybody else have any questions?
Well, I don't have a question except to say that sections one and two are really. Interesting and informative, if you're new to our community and for the folks at home, the L W R P boundaries. Currently, and I think Christine maybe was suggesting, you know, the boundaries could could change slightly, but but in general, we're talking about. Nine G and West primarily towards the river. But there's a lot of information that's included in these sections and I think you would get to know your community or at least that portion of your community.
Yes, definitely, and you know, that's so as an example, you sometimes you say, why do these things take so long to get done? And between the last time that communities, particularly along the Hudson River did L W R Ps and now. There were some changes again in definitions and et cetera on. The what constitutes or how to define your L W R P boundary. And in our previous plan, our, we had stated that our boundary. Went to the middle of the Hudson River and so it was co-terminus with Duchess County's boundary. So therefore it reached all the way across to Ulster County, basically in the middle of the river. Some of the definitional changes that had happened did not. Agree with that or support that on the state's part, and so we had to spend a lot of time researching. Old property transactions and any kind of. Deeded language or zoning, all kinds of things. To try to bolster our argument that the L W R P should extend. To the middle of the river and be co-terminus. Otherwise, we would have only gone, I forget how many hundreds feet into the river and then there kind of would have been. You know, no man's land, for instance, between our boundary and Duchess County's boundary. And as you might imagine, we were not the only town that found our itself in that type of situation, so. Luckily, I guess for us or, you know, I don't know if Department of State just got inundated with all these requests for information and help and whatnot, but anyway, that has finally been changed. And now everything is in agreement that. Town boundaries can extend to the middle of the river along with Duchess Counties and be co-terminus with the counties. Boundaries so that there's no. No man's land, you know, in there where there's nothing covered under the L W R Ps. So. And you may wonder why that's important, but for instance, I will say that when the proposal. Was put forth a few years ago about, you know, having barges be parked essentially on different stretches of the river. That was part of the. Materials that were presented about how that did not meet many communities that had the L W R Ps. And had spent a lot of time and money in. Redeveloping their water fronts as a result of the plans, so to have these huge tankers moored. You know, a hundred feet in some cases off of the waterfront development and, you know, promenades and parks and et cetera. You know, did not go, did not meet the L W R P standards. So, you know, it is an important document, it's not, we're not just doing it. Because for the heck of it, you know, or because we got a grant for it, it does have very important. Management implications for our town as well as, you know, all the towns along the river. For many issues like that.
Great, thank you very much.
And Christine, could you also just point out for the public? That this section of land is a very considered very sensitive. For a variety of reasons and that's why it's so strictly zoned. And why, you know, for not just the view shed and environmental reasons, but. The zoning in that area is is much stricter than it is in the rest of the town.
That's true, and that does, you know, there's many. Reasons behind that and for instance, the nine maps that I referenced. Which are not all included in the sections one and two because they obviously refer to other sections of the. Plan yet to be developed or updated, but maybe we can make sure we can try and see if we can get all nine of those maps up on the town. Website also, but. There are, you know, there's a number of important resources here beyond, you know, what you might. Think of as access to the river, you know, or what plays a part apart. In waterfront and so, you know, there are, we have in, we're very, I think, very lucky and benefited. In our area to be in a number like the National Landmark District. To have the scenic areas of statewide importance. Areas here to, we still have the sixteen mile historic district, so there's a lot of. Scenic reasons, a lot of historic reasons, a lot of agricultural reasons. Above and beyond what you might think of and now all of that goes into zoning considerations as they are developed. You know, historic land use patterns in the area, we, you know, a lot of this area is encompassed by. You know, the former. Aster Estates and the Fan Livingston Estates that were up and down this area that really. Influenced the land use patterns and the hamlets that developed and the inter. Interlocking roadways that were there before all of these. Properties moved out of the those families at the time and they are forming, those roads are forming the basis for many trail networks that we have in the town. To us, so you know, we are looking at trails. Waterfront access, but still, you know, hunting and fishing possibilities. Non-motorized access to the river, you know, as well as motorized access to the river. So there's a lot of different uses, activities. And, you know. Development patterns that need to be brought into all of this, it's really, it's very, very detailed, but very interesting, I find it. I don't know, what do you think, Bill? We have some really good discussions on these.
Very good, yep. Yep.
I love a lot of the history in here, I'm looking at section two, page thirty eight, that talks about the Estates District and it references a visit. By nine-year-old Teddy Roosevelt to Messina and Barrytown. Reportedly, it. It engendered him to have a love of nature that led to his zeal for land conservation, well, I guess we'll take credit for Teddy Roosevelt too, why not?
Right.
But, you know, if you've been to some of these estates on the river. And taken a look, see, you understand how it could inspire a lot of folks to do a lot of great things, so. Yeah, really interesting stuff, thank you very much for for all the work and.
And one other, one other quick thing to point out is. Within the town, we have, of course, the two villages, so the Village of Red Hook does not fall within this local waterfront revitalization. Proper boundary, but the Village of Tivoli does and the Village of Tivoli has its own. L W R P and so that's why Tivoli is shown there, thank you, Matt, as blank. Because they are developing their own L W R P and they are also, you know, they're also updating or they're just beginning to update theirs. So we will, you know, keep in touch with them to make sure that we're, the two plans complement each other. And, you know, but that's why, because that's the Village of Tivoli, is it a municipality with its own plan, so that's why it will not be. Included the resources, et cetera, in our, the nine maps that I mentioned.
Very good, thank you, Christine, and thank everybody on the committee for for all their hard work, it's really.
Yeah, major thanks to Paula Skunmaker who really keeps us all in line and on schedule and. Moving forward.
I don't think she knew how long it was going to take when she signed on.
I think that is correct.
But that's a good thing. Because she said yes.
Very good, so correspondence, all I have is just acknowledge that Bill O'Neil, that your I T F sent over. Your recommendation on short-term rentals on potential language for consideration, I know also acknowledge that. Economic Development Committee has also shared with us their thoughts on how they might recommend handling. Short-term rentals and so I think we should put up any information that we have. Related to it, if that's okay with you, board members, so the folks at home can start to take a look, see. And we can get some more public input and figure out how to continue work on. This important topic because I think as we have acknowledged, we want to strike a balance between. Legalizing it and accommodating it and understanding how to best to regulate it as well. Anything to add to correspondence besides that? Now, anybody have anything else? Okay, folks, I want to again, thank you all for for joining us, we. We hope that as we begin to open up and go out in society that. We don't start seeing spikes in in COVID numbers and I know we're all. Really ready to get back to having, you know, the flexibility that we. Came to be used to, so. With that said, thank you again for joining us, our next meeting regularly scheduled meeting is Wednesday, June twenty third. At seven thirty and at this time, I'd like to make a motion to close the meeting, is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Christine, all in favor, Jacob Testa.
Hi.
Bill Hamel. And Bill O'Neil.
Hi.
Thank you all, good night, everyone.
Good night.